Let's see. Okay, I'm going to call to order the Farmington Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, January 28th, 2019. If you can please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda, item 5B, goal development, reading activity.
So as you know, we've launched the refresh of our vision of the graduate here. We spent a lot of time in the meeting talking about the vision of the graduate, but we're starting a year-long process of updating our vision of the graduate and goals. So Kim wanted to work with the board on a reading that we had done with the DLC, and we're going to keep going back and forth and then go out to all different stakeholder groups as we go through this process of updating our vision of the graduate. So I'll turn it over to Kim, and I'm not sure if she wants to start with the mood meter, to start the activity.
Well, I'm a little bit afraid of starting. I've tried to make this activity very comfortable and open-ended so that everyone feels comfortable participating and no pressure, so I don't want anybody's mood meter in the blue. But with that said, I left at your table another copy of the article in case you didn't have one with you, and a little sort of overview of this particular activity and the article itself. As Kathy said, we read this article in preparation for our January administrative retreat, and it sparked such good conversation that Kathy and I thought that it might be something you would be interested in reading as well. It comes from the OECD organization, which is the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, best known probably for, you might remember the PISA exam, that's an international exam, so OECD is the organization that produces and collects data from that exam. So I just thought that we could have a little brief discussion about how this article made you think about some of the things we've been doing relative to our vision of the graduate and what things you would hope we would continue to do, maybe what we should do more of, maybe some things we should do less of. I just want to read for the community's benefit, a little piece of the introduction. This article is really talking about the future of education, thinking about education 2030, and that in the future, students will need to develop curiosity, imagination, resilience, and self-regulation, which we just heard a little bit about. They will need to respect and appreciate the ideas, perspectives, and values of others. They will need to cope with failure and rejection and to move forward in the face of adversity. Their motivation will be more than getting a good job and a high income. They will also need to care about the well-being of their friends, their families, the community, and the planet. And the article asks the question, what knowledge, skills, attitudes, and values will today's students need to thrive and shape their world? And how can instructional systems develop these knowledge, skills, attitudes, and values effectively? So on the back of this sheet, I just picked out six quotes that you might want to use to comment on, or there may be some ideas in the article that you found most interesting that you might want to comment on, and I'll turn to Chris to kind of invite members of the board to share your thoughts.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll open it up at this point in time. You know, just a thought I always have, as having a child who's now graduated college and sort of going forward and embracing technology into a new world, and we are going in that direction. But in a socially, social media savvy world, balancing and, you know, trying to teach my daughter, who's now out of college, to some of the stepstones of just what is crucial in the business world of interpersonal communication and sacrificing, do they sacrifice that with their, how do we balance, I guess, how do we balance human interaction, which is vital, to this fast-paced technological world and learning that we're living in now, and sacrificing some of the most fundamental concepts of human behavior as we go forward?
Yeah. It is a tension, and there's a lot about that idea of balance in this article.
Yeah. Anybody else have their thoughts?
I was going to say, I think that's one of the biggest challenges going in because you have almost two diversion things that are happening in education. You have a lot of businesses moving towards a work-from-home environment with the increase in technology, which is one way, and then you have such a big need for trade careers out there right now with the deficits that involve more human-to-human interaction and hands-on skills training. So there's a big challenge in teaching the various ways for, I guess, 2030, how people are going to be educated, since you have two very different things happening between the business world and the trade world, preparing students for either/or, and trying to mesh it together into one learning environment.
Right. And with everything that we read about artificial intelligences and, you know, technology being able to take on some of these jobs where it's just a matter of data or collection of information, the whole idea of human discussion and face-to-face communication and understanding your, either your client, your customer, your audience is what you're saying is so important.
Liz, yeah?
Yeah, so a couple of things that I, when I read this, really jumped out at me as things that were already starting to do well, were that, one of the things it talked about, that students who are best prepared for the future are change agents. So I think that we're already starting to teach the students in Farmington to be change agents. I think we already do a really good job at that with our program of studies, with some of the programs that we have, with what we do. I think that another thing, it's in the next page, actually, on page five, where it says, "The concept of competency implies more than just the acquisition of knowledge and skills. It involves the mobilization of knowledge, skills, and attitudes, and values to meet complex demands." So that speaks to, it's more than just learning something to learn, it's more than just acquiring a whole bunch of facts, just so that you have facts. It's actually knowing what to do with that knowledge and knowing how to apply that knowledge. And I think that we are doing that here already, and really teaching students to be leaders of their own learning, taking command of their own learning experiences, mastering their own studies, and I think that's great. Some of the things that we're just, not that we're just starting, but really getting more involved in is the, are the social aspects, like some of the changes socially, being more of an interlinked world, the social changes. So I think that that is something that we need to continue to work on and pay more attention to. But I do think that we are doing a very good job with teaching students how to learn and how to think for themselves and make their own assessments, not just to acquire facts. And that's sort of what this speaks to, I think. Like, you know, not just to learn A, B, C, D and do well on a test. I remember Veronica talked to us about a certain test. It's more about how well someone does in the workplace or how well-
College work readiness-
College work readiness assessment.
Right, to apply your thinking.
To apply your thinking, and this kind of reminded me of that, that this more is in line with that than, so, but I think we already are headed, like, I was thinking that we're more of a district that's probably going to do better with this than others, because we're already on our way.
We're on the way.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, um, you know, when I read it, I was, I was kind of like, we're, this is kind of describes our mindset to some degree, in terms of how we approach, how we do our work. I was actually more struck by the dissonance between what's in this document and what I would perceive to be what's coming out of the federal government. And this is not, this is not a federal or an American doc, and I mean, some, like, you know, that, but this was not created by the United States Department of Education, it's created by the United Nations. And so my concern, frankly, is that there is a disconnect from what these noble and appropriate goals, which I wholeheartedly endorse, and what lack of guidance we're getting with respect to 2030 education coming out of the United States Department of Education. So I would just say, you know, I don't know how relevant this document can be to us, because we already kind of, we already really embrace these principles, I think, generally, you know, and it's helpful for us to give us guidance on how we can fulfill those principles and really develop them and enhance them as we go into a 2030 mindset, right? But I'm skeptical, frankly, because I don't know what we're going to be asked of our national leaders and what we should be doing with kids graduating in 2030. What their vision of a high school graduate in 2030 is, we don't have that, in a way that I, from what I've seen to this point, is anywhere consistent with things like rigor. I mean, when we talk about, one of the things that we saw in the first page, this is what made me start to think about it, was this, you know, need for new solutions in a rapidly changing world. First challenge is environmental, for example, climate change. Well, we have, you know, an administration that's removing climate change data from, you know, government websites. So how do we embrace that as a public school when we're getting an absence of direction on how that challenge should be met through, you know, federal education policy? So that's, so this is helpful, but, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have read it, because I embrace what's in here and I think this is appropriate. And I also commend you both, and Veronica, for understanding this stuff even ahead of time, having the vision ahead of time, to know that we had to change the mentality, the pedagogy necessary to get kids ready for 2030. I'm just, frankly pessimistic that this is the kind of thing that we're going to see incorporated, you know, system-wide, if you will, nationwide, statewide, and I hope there's not that kind of resistance that I see presently in federal education policy to some of the core principles set forth in this document. That's the truth of it.
Ellen?
Well, I agree it's helpful, but I also think it's hopeful, and I also agree with a lot of the comments Liz had. I think that we are doing so much of this, we see our own vision of the graduate in much of this, but I, the real piece that struck me is the whole child and the sustainability piece. And I think we do some of that, and I'll, you know, look, some of the schools, I don't think we probably do as much, but really, you know, and one of the things that popped out at me is, is we can't, we can't just have students gaining knowledge, we have to mobilize that knowledge and bring it forward, and everything has consequences, and that means our, I was so, you know, very happy to see that everything builds up to the earth and our planet. And so I actually think it could be hopeful, that even with what Bill said, what's going on at the national level, that this is very forward-thinking, and it is, this is global, this is not just happening, and this is, you know, there's the list of contributors all over the world, and this is a call from the United Nations, that we have to start teaching our students that they have a responsibility, not only to be educated, and we have a responsibility to educate them, but that everything has consequences, and to me, that's very hopeful.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for your comments. It's, I agree, it's very hopeful, it's exciting to us to think into the future. The future is already in our schools, the class of 2030 is already in our schools, and oftentimes, you know, we hear from our students what they want for their own education, and we follow them, because they are excited about learning in general, so I think there was a piece of that in here, too. So I appreciate your comments and taking the time to think about it.
And just thinking back to 2010, when we went through a year-long process, starting in 2009, to create a vision of the graduate, being one of the only districts in Connecticut and well beyond Connecticut to do that, and how far that vision has taken us. When we think about what we expect at the end of a child's education here in Farmington, and starting, as you saw today, with our Noah Wallace students, starting in kindergarten to develop not only core body of knowledge, but these transferable thinking and learning skills, that we were that forward-thinking back in 2009, 2010. I am excited about this, you know, update to the vision of the graduate, because now we are looking at 2030, and 20, those students are with us right now, and so much of what's in here, like Liz said, and others, are things that we, you know, set out to do, you know, almost 10 years ago. And so you can see that this work takes a long time, there's a lot of shifts that we've had to make as a result, but we are well-poised for the next level of work, and it's just exciting, you know, to read articles like this and have discussions, you know, among board members and community members about what we hope and dream for our graduates. And just thinking about 2030 is a little overwhelming, but also exciting and hopeful.
Thank you. Okay, 5C, preliminary special services budget.
So each year, we come to the board, and usually it's not this close to the Saturday workshop, budget workshop, but it just happened to be that way this time, and so Dr. Singer is going to go over the preliminary special services budget for 2019, 2020. Kim will then follow up with a staffing, preliminary staffing report, and so, you know, it's nice to have these two reports together and back-to-back, but we want to welcome Lori, Lori to the table, and we'll have you start your presentation.
Thank you, this is my ninth presentation, my ninth. I don't build any turn and talks into it, but I can. So I know you all had this ahead of time, so we'll, I just want to really pick up on some of the most important points as we go through. So this is our preliminary special services budget for the 19, 20 school year, our mission statement and a really cute picture from our SLC classroom. So these are statistics that I provide to you every year. You can see that we currently have 501 students, grades K to 12 with disabilities, for whom the district's financially responsible. This is actually the exact same number we had last year, 501, but our percentage went up slightly because our overall enrollment went down slightly, so that's why we bumped up a little bit. You can see the expenditures used for special education, along with the number of full-time staff, teachers, and instructors.
Quick question, Lori, that's per pupil, right?
Per pupil.
The $13,000 number, that's per pupil?
That's-
I have the same question, Bill.
Yes. For special, the-
Because that number seemed a little weird, I was going to ask you, you're spending $13,294.48.
To the penny, yes.
Right, but per pupil. Okay.
That's the per pupil.
Thank you.
Okay. I should have probably clarified that more. Okay. So here's our main focus areas, which is the overview of the budget in general, the highlights of some of our programs, and then our recommendations for this coming year. So these are sort of the four drivers in the budget. The first being identification, which is that we make sure we have state-of-the-art measures in order to evaluate students and then to plan for their programming. The programming itself, which we'll go over in a moment, our mental health support, which I know I've mentioned over the last few years, continues to be very important, and our professional development and support to continue to build capacity and to make sure that we can deliver the best possible services. So as you can see, our percentage of students with disabilities since 2009 has gone up every year. This would be in keeping with just about every district in the state, that the percentage is slowly going up, and you can see on the second to the left column, the number of students, and then as opposed to the total enrollment. This is the DURG-B special education prevalence rates. If you see where we are, we would be the third to the lowest, as far as our percentage of students identified in special education. And please feel free, if you have any questions, as we go. This is, I want to make sure you understand this table, what this is, is of the special education students, so the 501 students, this is the percentage of students that are being educated outside of our district, so it would be either public or private outplacement. So as you can see, we're at 5.7%, which I think is, really speaks well to our programming, that we're able to keep students in district. And these are the four sort of main programs that we have, the specialized learning center, the sales program, the SEL classrooms, and the STEP classroom, and I'm going to go through each one. The specialized learning center has, this is the ninth year that it's been in district. Originally, when I first came here, we had one classroom at, I believe at West District, we're looking to open the second at Union. We now have classrooms at both of those schools, along with Westwoods, IAR, and two classrooms at the high school level. Students in the program receive intensive instruction, applied behavioral analysis, discreet trial and direct instruction, inclusive opportunities, and a lot of really, over the years, we've built in more and more opportunities for them to interact appropriately and to have opportunities to be in the general education classroom with their typical peers. And as you can see, we currently have 51 students that are serviced in those programs. Some of the highlights, we have been collaborating with the Center for Children with Special Needs in Glastonbury for the past, I believe it's the past seven years. They provide us with some BCBA support, and they also provide us with consultation and professional development for the paraprofessionals and for the teachers. We've worked a lot on vertical alignment of programming to make sure that transitions from building to building are seamless, and we've also spent a lot of time working on our preschool SLC program, which is housed at West District School. There's a lot of collaboration that takes place between the classroom teachers and the SLC teachers, and that has been a primary area of focus over the last few years. So a shift that we're proposing for this year is, we want to continue our relationship with the Center for Children with Special Needs, but more for the professional development and program oversight. We have been purchasing BCBA services from them, which is approximately two to two and a half days a week of time. We want to instead hire a second BCBA, because we currently have one that the district employs in addition to this time. So this would be an increase of BCBA time for the district of approximately two and a half days, so it would be two FTEs that we had of our own BCBAs, but we would continue the relationship with the Center for Children with Special Needs as far as consultation and professional development. The sale program is a program at Farmington High School, which is for students who are on the autism spectrum but are able to access the general education curriculum. The purpose of the program is to offer extra social and emotional support, along with academic as needed, to make sure that these students are successful. Currently, we have 15 students in the high school program. Some of the highlights from this year, that the students have received individual counseling and participate in our metacognition class, which is accredited class based on the Michelle Garcia Winter Program and a scientifically-based curriculum that helps students on the autism spectrum with their social skills. This past year, we added an additional job coach, who's been working with students in the sale program around their vocational opportunities and supports. And we have, one of our actually new teachers is teaching in that program this year, and it's been a very exciting addition to the high school. At this point, we are recommending that we maintain that program as it is staffed currently. The STEP program has been at the high school now, I think we are going into year seven next year. It serves students grades nine to 12. This is a program with a full-time teacher and a full-time social worker, along with three dedicated paraprofessionals who are trained in this area. Mainstream students out of the program as much as the students can manage, but provide ongoing support throughout the day. Currently, if you look at that top number, that's the number of students who have gone through the program so far. 21 out of 34 of the students that have gone through the program returned from outplacements, and 21 out of 24 who have hit the senior year have graduated, which I think is a very impressive statistic. The team there works very hard. Another thing that I didn't put there, which was in addition this year, is we have two groups that meet, each group meets every day, that students in the program participate in one of the two groups, so they're receiving group therapy every day, in addition to the individual therapy that they receive and other support. So it's been a very successful program. At this point in time, we are recommending that we maintain the STEP staffing as is. And over the last two years, we've developed the SEL resource rooms. These serve students in grades K to eight. There is a classroom currently at East Farms, at Noah Wallace, at Westwoods, and IAR, and these resource rooms have dedicated special education teachers, along with some support from social workers and psychologists in the district to help students who have social, emotional challenges. And the programming really is focused on reducing those challenges, supporting academics, and again, having students access the general ed curriculum as much as they are able to Some of the highlights from this past year have been that we have been able to return some students from outplacements to the district, that we have increased individual counseling and added some group counseling to the program. The care team also offers support and professional development for these programs, and they travel around the programs to support them. So our proposed budget recommendations is to consolidate the East Farms and the Noah Wallace programs together, to have one program, and to add 1.5 FTEs, special education, mental health positions, to support that program. Really, the driving force is that we have seen, and seems to be a national trend, state trend, national trend, in seeing young children that have presented to us with more severe behavioral challenges, and through this type of staffing, we can offer, it's really mirroring the STEP program, and offering more intensive programming, so we can really assist these children when they're young, so they can eventually not require this level of support. And then our mental health support, we really want to thank the board for, over the last few years, we've increased psychology time, we've increased social work time. This has really allowed us to service more children through individual and group therapies, collaboration with classroom teachers, and supports to our programs. We've also spent a lot of time over the past year learning how to conduct risk assessments, and we'll talk about that in a minute, about what we're doing with it. And some of the highlights this year, a number of the schools, including where we are right now, have started implementing restorative practices, which has been really helpful in helping students to know each other better and also to engage in corrective talk that will, allows them to understand each other and to work on programs as they come up. We've continued to offer professional development and management in the active classroom, which is a resource that's used across the district by teachers. We continue with the collaborative problem-solving, which is the Ross-Green methodology that we've had in place for a couple of years, three years now. The risk assessment protocol, the care team and I worked on developing a risk assessment for students who are presenting with really challenging thoughts and behaviors, that helps us to understand better where they're at, and we continue to develop tiered interventions of support within the district. Some of the highlights of the care team this year, they- Some of the highlights of the care team this year, they are the PMT trainers for the district, which is the methodology that we use to teach staff members how to de-escalate and if they have to restrain students. Provided professional development in all of our SEL initiatives, collaborative problem solving, the MacBook and the trauma-informed instruction. They provide emergency crisis support. Behavioral Resource website has been built by them, which teachers are using to access information. They plan and provide the paraprofessional PD for anything to do with behavioral issues, and have provided training to the district mental health professionals on the risk assessments. So our budget recommendation in this area is to increase the care team by one FTE, and this is to support students at risk, and in particular, to support the programming at IAR. One thing we have seen over the last couple of years is problems or certain issues that we used to see at the high school level, we're now seeing younger and more at the middle school. So that's a building that we'd like to offer more support to and to helping to build programming So now I want to talk a minute about our consultation and evaluation. Right now, we have the Center for Children with Special Needs consultants. We have some reading dyslexia consultants that are working with the districts. We also hire a, well, we contract with a teacher of the deaf to work with our hearing impaired students. We also provide neuropsychological evaluations for students that are needed, along with psychiatric This is data I wanted you to take a look at. I thought it really told the story about the number of risk assessments that we've been doing each year. And as you can see, this is 2017, 18, what a spike we had in the number of risk assessments that were done. So just to give you an idea, there's lots of students struggling with anxiety and other issues, and that, this allows us to talk to them, assess where they are, and then help make recommendations that are appropriate for them. And again, different little pie chart there, but you can see that ninth grade and 10th grade is where we see the most risk assessments that are done. And by senior year, it's starting to drop off some. So in the budget proposed, we're looking for an increase in the consultation evaluation line. We've had a big increase in risk assessment, some of which we've had to contract for on the outside for students who are more at imminent risk. We've also seen a real increase in our psychiatric and neuropsychological evaluations, again, due to some of the student need that we see, and along with consultation services for some of our specialized programming. But as you can see, when you look at our percentage of our total budget, we still remain fiscally responsible when you look at us compared to the other Derg B towns. So these are our overall proposed budget changes for this year. The first, and again, these are all driven by student need, is the 1.5 increase, which is for the increase in programming, the consolidation, and increase in staffing for elementary SEL programming. The full-time BCBA, which would be the shift in the resources that we did pay for from CCSN, not paying for those, but instead increasing and having a full-time BCBA. And then an increase of a full-time employee for the care team, which brings us to a total of 3.5 FTEs. The other drivers, as you can see, the numbers for the increases in these lines, $41,000 increase in consultation. The increase in nursing is due to students that require one-to-one nursing services due to medical needs. We did see a bump up in ESY as well, students with more significant needs, and a slightly higher number of students have been in our summer programming. And our evaluation line, as I spoke about before, having to do with psychiatric evaluations and risk assessments. Vince, you did an excellent job.
Yeah.
Couldn't have asked for a better assistant. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Laurie. Bill?
Laurie, can you talk a little bit about the impact outplacements have on our budget? And to what, whether and to what extent the economic considerations of outplacements have, you know, in terms of how we budget for our staffing? In other words, can you, you know, some of my question is, I mean, I know there's this reluctance, I'm going to start, I'm going to preface by saying, I don't think there's reluctance to do whatever is necessary for a child. Let me start out with that, okay? So make sure we're all on the same page on that. But can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So our, as you saw in the slide that showed that 5.7%, our outplacements are low compared to districts in Derg B and districts our size. And that's because we have programming in district that can take care of the needs of many of our children. So certainly, outplacements can be a very volatile line. Like, right now, I'm trying to plan for next year, and, you know, somebody could move into district that's already in an outplacement, or some, you know, someone could have some significant issues and need to be outplaced. So it's always sort of a volatile line that, I think over the last eight, almost nine years now, we've been pretty consistent in that line. We've come down, down, and we've been holding at about the same place. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, I think it does. I think it does.
I am a strong believer in if we can educate a child in district, we want to do it, because I believe that children learn best from being with their typical peers. And when you outplace a student, you take that away.
Right. And the comprehensive programming that we have. So a lot of districts have to go to outplacements because they don't have specialized programs. And as a district, you know, and in collaboration with the board, we made a choice to open specialized programs in district. And this is, we've had a long history of this, even before I arrived as superintendent. It's always been a belief that, you know, if we can provide the services in district with a child's peers, and in a situation where students don't get a narrow program, but more of a comprehensive program, where there's athletics and clubs and lots of different things that students can participate in that in an outplacement would not be offered. So it's never to say that we don't outplace, we do. You can see that we do. And that would be when we don't have the right programming, where, you know, the programming isn't going to meet the child's needs. But we have much more robust programming here than in most districts. And that was an investment we made, and I know many people around the table remember those years when we were building those programs. And they were very costly, but we felt it was very important to have those programs for our community's children.
And I think, Kathy, the other thing, just to pick up on what you said, is that when a child remains in district, we can also continue to access the same curriculum as much as possible. When a child is outplaced, one of the difficulties that happens is they lose that thread and sometimes academically slip farther behind. So then when you try to transition them back, in addition to whatever the reason was they were outplaced, you also now have an issue with curriculum and them not being where we want them to be. So it just compounds it when we have to do that.
Got a follow-up question, please? In terms of children that have, my next question really is with equity district-wide. And what I mean by that is, if there are certain behaviors in certain schools and other behaviors exhibited in other schools, how do we address, I mean, is it a staffing issue? Is it a programming issue? When you have schools that might, you know, classes are in lockdown, for example, in some schools where there's might be very limited learning for a portion of a day, where it's not happening, and other schools the same way? How do we, how do we work through that?
So I think, one, I think on the elementary level, I think by consolidating these programs, we're going to move away from that issue. Mainly because having the dedicated people to the program that are there all day, having a home base, I think will eliminate a lot of that issue. Again, I look at the STEP program. They have a full-time teacher, a full-time social worker. When kids struggle, there's someone there, and it's a family-type feeling for them. So we are, in many ways, looking to duplicate that type of model at the elementary level. So I think that will. I will say too, I think this district, but when I talk to other directors, all districts, we're facing changing population. We have more students with more significant needs. And one of the things we're really focusing on all the time is helping to train staff to, you know, work with different kinds of kids that they might not have worked with maybe 10 years ago, 10 years ago. So that's another changing dynamic that's always going on and that we're always talking about, so. But it's challenging, and we certainly don't want buildings in lockdown. We don't want that. So that's a lot of the drive.
What we're trying to do here. Okay. So you're, I mean, I'm confident then from what you're basically saying, that this kind of approach, we can avoid those challenges that we've had in prior years.
Yes.
Okay. Last question, real quick. I love the Zen Den at IAR, and I didn't see it. Is it anywhere in your plans to push the Zen Den out district-wide?
So it's interesting to hear that, because the STEP program got to see the Zen Den. I think we should all make one in our own homes. But they were looking at their space to try and design something similar in their program. And I think Westwoods, we have potential to do it. So it's a wonderful place for kids, and yes.
I understand it stays space-limited. I also say it's very space-limited.
Yeah, they're all.
I've heard that.
Yes, that's true. But it is a great resource, and it was, you know, it's a wonderful opportunity for us really.
Thank you. Thanks, Laurie. Great job, as always. Thank you.
Liz?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. Can you just explain how the consolidation of the SEL would work? Like, is it going to be, where would the people be housed? Like, where would the employees be?
So we're looking at this building.
It would be in Noah Wallace.
That's what we're looking at.
Okay. All right. And then would they, so they would travel to East Farms or?
You mean the students?
Yeah.
Yes, just like with the SLC. That's at two of our schools, so students in the SLC could be, really, their homeschool could be any of the four schools, and they are bused, so we would do the same.
Okay.
We would provide transportation to this building for them.
Okay. All right. And I had a question about risk assessments. So I saw that there was the spike in the risk assessments. So could you just tell us, could you explain, like, what triggers a risk assessment? Like, what's, because, and is it something that is mandated? Like, are you required to do a risk assessment if certain things trigger it?
It would be under best practice, but the state is looking at these, but right now it's under best practice. So when a student makes a statement that they're feeling like they might want to harm themselves, or, you know, or they're making statements about feeling very depressed or so anxious, say they can't go to class over time, that would trigger a risk assessment. And basically, it's an evaluation of, you know, where the student is then, you know, and then we'd certainly contact the parent or guardian and let them know, you know, what we found. We have had some students that from the risk assessments do need to go to the hospital, that can happen. Or it could be that we help the parent to refer out to a therapist. It depends on what we see. But it's triggered usually by statements of either self-harm or deep depression.
So that number is something that we're required to react to. So it's not something you can just say, you know, we're not going to look at that right now, you know, like, we'll wait and see what happens, you know? That's something that's required. So a spike of that amount really is, well, number, it's concerning for several reasons, but it is something that you have to react to. It's some, yeah.
So I can tell you what we're doing this year. So the way it worked at the high school in the past, if a student was feeling that way, they'd come down to, say, the counseling, you know, offices, maybe ask to see their counselor, they would do it. What we've done this year is we have a triage model in place, where every day, the counselors have a backup of either the social worker or the psychologist. So when a student comes down, let's say the counselor's busy too, or they are looking for a second opinion, we bring in, that person is on call that day, they do the backup, they will help with the risk assessment. And we found that it's getting us sort of more pointed recommendations, which right now we're looking at. But I know when I asked where we were right now with risk assessments, they said, right now, we're about the halfway mark of where we were last year, so it's the same, similar trend.
Okay.
But lots of kids with, you know, anxiety and, sort of reflecting society as a whole, I think. But, you know, certainly it's concerning, and I think if you look at what counselors did 10 years ago as opposed to what they do now, they're certainly doing a lot more mental health, and we're providing a lot more training for them on how to manage some of these issues.
And that spike is FHS.
This is FHS.
Are we seeing the same thing in IAR and the elementary schools as well?
Yes. We have data from IAR. I don't have the same hard data. We don't do as many risk assessments, I would say, at the lower levels, but we are seeing more behaviors at the lower levels.
Right. Well, it wouldn't be, it's probably not the same thing as a risk assessment, but we are seeing the same sort of.
We're seeing more overt behaviors from kids.
Behaviors, right, okay.
Acting things out that they can't articulate more.
I also look at that spike as, you know, in many ways, our core belief of relationships matter. I want students to come to us, and I want them to express what they're feeling and feel safe in doing that. So although it's very concerning, and we certainly have, you know, paid attention to this area, you know, social, emotional learning, mental health, we've paid attention over the last many years. It's still, when I see that, I'm thankful that students do come to us and tell us when they're feeling that way.
But just, you know, I was interested in that too. Laurie, maybe in your professional opinion, I mean, this could be aberrational five years out, it may not be. You know, in your professional opinion, is, are there things where you're seeing that are different, or, you know, just in your professional opinion, is there some reason for this spike that's different?
Well, I mean, I think there's a number of things, but when I talk to counselors about, like, you know, we talk about what kinds of things in hearing. I mean, there's, you know, students who come down and they're anxious about school shootings, where they see things, I mean, we hear things like that. I think there's more anxiety just about college and everything. It's sort of the everything, you know? The pressures that we all feel, but certainly more magnified when you're an adolescent trying to sort through this. I do think, though, that we, part of this bike could be too, that we are so much more conscious of looking for signs. So perhaps something a few years ago, we might not have done the risk assessment on, we are now. Which, what we're tracking too, which I can speak about in the future, is the outcome. So we did the risk assessment, and then it's the outcome, now what happens. And then following up to see that we have either stabilized that, students work through it, because that's, this is the first part, but then you want to make sure that you're following up and making sure that students remain safe and are feeling better.
Great. Thank you.
There's just one part of the report. So at the beginning, you asked about that expenditure, and so I think we should recheck it.
Yes, recheck it.
Yeah, because I just looked on EdSite very quickly, and I think this is 13 million something. So in 2015, 16, we were at 13,274,572.
Okay.
So I think we'll just recheck that number. That's 2015, 16, so I'm assuming 17, 18, you know, was a higher number. So we'll definitely recheck that and get that back.
All right. Any additional questions for Laurie? All right, Laurie, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, 5D, preliminary staffing budget for 2019, 2020.
So this is Kim's report. She's going to present where we are for staffing in this next budget year. Thank you. So this is the annual report that I provide to the board with an early look at proposed staffing requests and changes that you will likely see in the superintendent's budget in just a few days. On page three, I've provided you with a preview of the major budget drivers for the 2019, 2020 budget, and a description of three of those drivers as they relate to professional staffing. First and foremost, these proposals address academic excellence and equitable learning opportunities for all students. Number one, these recommendations adhere to the board's policies and regulations for class size. And you can see elementary class size projections on pages eight, nine, and 10 in the report. As you know, we monitor class size very carefully over time, and we include two additional FTEs in the budget to address volatile enrollment. We only assign these teachers when we have confidence that a particular school and grade is going to need an additional teacher nor to maintain reasonable class sizes. Second, also within this budget area is a request for an additional .3 FTEs in order to make our current ELL, or English Language Learning Teacher, full-time. She currently works part-time at .7, and she is an utterly amazing dynamo who travels to all of our schools, and she's just incredibly dedicated and talented and goes above and beyond to. beyond to support the work of our ELL tutors. She reaches out to families, provides programming in the evenings. She's just amazing. She works under the direction of Veronica Ruzek, the Director of Curriculum, and so we feel it's absolutely vital to have her full-time now, given that our ELL population is continuing to grow. The second major budget driver is everything that Lori just spoke about in the area of social, emotional learning. The staffing requests in this area are those that Dr. Singer has already presented. And, you know, we just, we really do, I will echo, we continue to experience challenges in the area of mental health and behavioral readiness for learning. And through collaborative planning with all of the principals and special services leaders, we believe that some restructuring would better address student needs primarily at the elementary and middle school grades. So the staffing proposals would allow us to develop a diagnostic and therapeutic program in one elementary school for our children with the most intensive needs. This programming would provide supports for students and staff who are, and with staff who are highly trained with the right expertise to develop behavioral plans and training for these students and self-regulation skills. As always, our goal is to return students to or keep students in regular classroom environments as soon or as much as possible. And the overall FTE increase at the elementary level in this area would, for this specific program, would be 1.5. The request for an additional 1.0, a member of the care team who will primarily be based at IAR next year, is intended to address both student and faculty needs. The mental health professionals on the care team who've been with us for a few years have proven very effective in building teacher capacity to create self-managed classrooms. They partner with teachers, they act as coaches and mentors and problem solvers, they work alongside counselors, psychologists, and social workers, and create really a network of support for students and families. And currently at IAR, the faculty and staff are collectively very invested in learning how to improve their own practices, and we think that an onsite care team professional would show that faculty the kind of support they're asking for. And Lori, both Lori and Scott Hurwitz, the principal of IAR, would share in helping that person set priorities and develop an action plan for work there next year. The additional 1.0 BCBA in the staffing proposal would allow us to hire an in-house expert, as Lori explained, whose salary would be offset a bit by the reduction in the contract we have with CCSN, or the Center for Children with Special Needs. By doing this, we will realize an increase in the amount of time available to support specialized programs and as well other needs across the district. The final budget driver is related to flexible pathways for challenge and support. You are going to hear more about the, this area of the budget when we talk about curriculum this weekend, but this evening, I really am excited to share with you an innovative idea that has come to us from the high school English department. They are looking for a minor increase in staffing of .1 that would allow them to launch an exciting new opportunity for students at the high school. Currently, we have a tutor-staffed writing center, and students access that writing center for support and help with their writing. The English department is looking to develop a more college-like model whereby the center would be staffed with students who have been trained to become peer tutors. The interested students would sign up for a one semester credit-bearing course in the fall called Writing Center Fellowship. And the idea would be that, you know, they would be trained to be writer-focused tutors in the writing center for the spring semester. Amy Miller is the chair of the English department, and she wrote to me and said, "We hold a shared vision of students, a student-staffed writing center as a thriving place where students truly lead their own learning through peer-facilitated tutoring using a writer-centered pedagogy." So I think for a minor increase in staffing, that's a very exciting development. So on the next page in the report, on page four, I've given you kind of an overview of both increases and decreases in staffing. The total proposed staffing change is an increase of 2.6. As you can see, there are some reductions that are driven by enrollment, the reduction of a classroom teacher at Westwoods, and also a .5 reduction in world language at Westwoods that's achieved through the efficiency and scheduling for Spanish-only there next Another efficiency through reorganization of staffing is achieved at the high school, and a .3 reduction in PE and health. We have talked, I think Vince has said a few times here at the board, that we've seen a bit of an increase in our federal grants, and so in our Title I grant, we are feeling comfortable shifting a .3 reading teacher FTE to the Title I grant. And also further down the list, you can see that Lori's comfortable shifting .2 of a special education resource teacher salary to her IDEA grant. And I think that's the overview. So I certainly can answer any questions that you have about this report.
Thank you, Lori. Open up for any questions. That was easy. Thank you very much.
That was okay.
Next item, 5E, engaged learning update.
So you'll see a few different highlights here, all very much aligned to our vision of the graduate that we heard about earlier this evening. So at West District, students were engaged in a student-wide assembly to revisit and recommit themselves to West District's norms and school-wide expectations. At East Farms, they engaged in an hour of code with third and fourth graders, and FHS students actually led that effort. So a nice, you know, example of students at our high school working with our elementary students. There's some great photos there. And then another example, FHS and Westwood students once again worked together through Spanish classes, and they served as an authentic audience for one another by comparing a typical day at Westwoods to a typical day at FHS, all in Spanish. Union School engaged in assembly honoring Martin Luther King Jr., and students led the assembly through learning about Martin Luther King Jr., music, and sharing their own dreams with one another. And at IAR, through the science curriculum, students engaged in learning that brought the world to our students and the students to the world, using real-world investigations through Medical Moment and other real-world investigations. FHS students attended and presented at a middle-level leadership conference through CAS, which is a principals' organization here in Connecticut, and that was held at Trinity College, and the topic was empowering student voices. So again, a great example from our Noah Wallace students about, in the area of student voice. And Noah Wallace Grade III students are exploring habitats through hands-on research, engineering challenges, reading, note-taking strategy. So really great examples of, you know, our curriculum and how student voice, choice, and authentic work are, you know, key features of our curriculum.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see the collaboration between the schools.
It is.
You know, it's nice to see that, yeah. Okay. Next item, 5F, professional appointments, retirements, and resignations.
Yes. So you can see two resignations and two retirements. And the two retirements we recently announced, Dr. Silva will be retiring at the end of the year. Our principal at FHS, she's done just an incredible job, leading the high school and leading the efforts that we have relative to our goals and our vision of the graduate. Done an exemplary job. And then Kurt Panducio, who has spent the last 25 years as our assistant principal, is also retiring at the end of the year, and again, someone who has contributed so much to the high school and really to the whole district. And both of them will really leave a legacy of excellence, and we're going to miss them, but they're here with us until June 30. And so they're not leaving just yet, but just want to publicly thank them for all their dedication and hard work.
As does the board. It's a sad day to see both of them going. It's, we're blessed having both of them at the high school, and it's sad to see them go, but wish them publicly well in their retirement. And I'm jealous on some levels, but wish them well.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item, 6A, budget impact, budget update.
I think the only thing from two weeks ago, the board meeting that I'll mention is since that time, the first choice tuition grant installment came into the town, 207,525. It usually comes in two pieces, and it's on track with what I was thinking.
Any questions for Vince? Okay. Next item on the agenda is 6B, approval of revisions to Policy 6146, the graduation second reading. Can I have a motion to approve the revisions to Policy 6146?
Motion? Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Okay. Would be none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Okay, that's approved. Next item on the agenda, 6C, approval of revisions to Policy 5141.21, administration of medication, second reading. Can I have a motion to approve the revisions to Policy 5141.21?
Motion? Second.
Any discussion, comments, questions?
There was a change, right? So that only nurses can administer the naloxone, right?
So we did, there was a question about after school, and can others administer, and we did get, you know, we reached out to Shipman and Goodwin and, you know, just to get that clarified. So I will start with, we made a change to include an effective date of July 1, 2019. And basically, they are recommending Shipman and Goodwin that only nurses be permitted to administer Narcan, and that really, you know, we're ahead of, you know, any kind of state mandate for it. So we just want to take this one step at a time at this point. So it would just be nurses during the school day.
Any further questions or comments? Okay. The motion to approve revisions to Policy 5141.21, administration of medication, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Approved. Okay. Item seven, 7A, new business discussion of the contract between Farmington Board of Education, FPS employees. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion? Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Will be in executive session. Okay. We're back in session. Next item on the agenda, 7B, approval of the contract between Farmington Board of Education and FPS EU Local 6854. I'm going to present a motion as follows, a motion to approve a contract between the Farmington Board of Education, Farmington Public Schools United, AFT, a three-year contract agreement with the following provisions. Salary changes, years one through three, 2018 through 2021. The agreement includes a 2% general wage increase in years 2018 to 2019, another 2% increase in year two, 2019 to 2020, and a, an additional 2% increase in year three, 2020 to 2021. In addition, the motion will note that the new insurance plan carries the following design features, an HSA deposit in the year 2018 to 2019 of $1,200, $2,400, an HSA deposit in the year 2019, 2020 of $1,100 and $2,200, an HSA deposit in the year 2020 to 2021 of $1,000 and $2,000. In addition, in 2018, 2019, a premium cost share of 16.5%. In year 2019 to 2020, a premium cost share of 17.5%. And in year 2020, 2021, a premium cost share of 18%. Lastly, the agreement will include a prescription management provision that will be implemented in year one to include generic substitution, generics being required when available and medically appropriate unless the physician designates as dispense as written. If I can have a motion to approve the contract as stated?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Absentions? It's approved. Okay. Next item on the agenda, item 7C, review and approval of final plans as prepared for bidding for the security of vestibule projects at Union, West District, Westwoods, and Irving-Robins Middle School.
So we're progressing with these projects at our schools. Rusty Malik is here, and will be sharing with the board information about a recent meeting that Rusty and Tim Harris had with the state, and the next step in our process as we move along with these projects.
Good evening. So the meeting that Vince was referencing was the prep meeting, which we met with the representatives from the state to basically get an understanding of what documentation that they will require when we go to what's our next step, which is a PCR meeting, which is a plan review meeting. And the reason we went for this prep meeting is because the requirements are really set up for a much larger project, and so there's many things in there that if you don't negotiate in front, you know, ahead of time, you have to go through and complete. And we were able to really take maybe a third of the requirements out of the mix for this next meeting. Our next meeting, which is the PCR meeting, is scheduled for February 13th, and that's a meeting you have to go to, to, you get approval. After the approval, what they basically do is give you a letter to say you can go out to bid, and prior to that approval, you can't really go out to bid. As part of that approval process, one of the requirements is to have the EDO 4.2, or SGC 4.2 it's called now, which is a document that says that the Board of Education and the Building Committee have reviewed and approved the plans and specifications so that we can submit that information to the state and go through the review process. So I have with me the set of drawings. I don't expect you to go through them. Nobody really goes through the set of drawings. You're all aware of the scope of the projects, and we certainly can go through if you so choose, but it's really more of a basic requirement from the state. Once you approve it, then the chairman of the Board of Ed and the chairman of the Building Committee and the superintendent, as well as myself, sign this document, and that's one of the probably 30 documents that we have to submit to them at this point. So with that being said, the process is fairly simple. What I have here are a book of specifications. There'll be one actually for each of the schools. Unfortunately, we can't just put them all into one specification, so it's a very repetitive process because everyone has its own specific project number. So with that in mind, they want to see a separate manual for each book. But what we have here is the overall manual that covers all the projects. And then we have four sets of drawings, one for each school. You know, the scope, as you're aware, is different at each one of the schools. West District is probably the most, the one that most of the work is being done at, and that's because the main office is moving to the front of the building, and then we're also doing some renovation work where the main office used to be and the nurse's office used to be. So really, unless you want to, give you more information about the scope, or if you have any questions, you can.
I just have a housekeeping question. Who signs the document as the chair of the Building Committee?
It's my understanding, the Building Committee is the Board of Education. That's what one of the council's actions were, that the council took, appointing the Board of Education as the Building Committee. So I think it is the chair. That is my understanding. Yep.
So there
So it seemed like there were two separate documents at the chair. So Chris will sign two documents?
No, it's actually, he'll sign four documents. This is an example of one of the four. So he'll sign in two locations. Kathy will sign in one, and I've already signed the last one.
And it's one for each school.
And it's one for each school.
This was not something I need for tonight, but would it be possible to get a draw? Because I'm guessing you got a lot of schematics in there as well, which I'm not really interested in. But what it looks like now and what it's going to look like as built, can you maybe get that to us, Vince, at some point? Just a simple drawing, or simple, you know, renditions of that? Is that possible?
As in floor plan?
Yeah, floor plan. Just a simple floor plan. Something very simple to that.
Okay.
People might be interested to see as well.
Well, the only thing, I was thinking that, but this is part of our security. So I would, maybe let's, I don't even know if that's, that might be something we even might want to review in executive session without you actually emailing them out to us. I don't know. I don't know the protocols for that. It's something to think about.
I'll check with Paul. But, you know, it might be that we can just send it, and/or he may recommend that we not do that.
Right, right.
Do that in executive session.
Okay, so I do want to see that, but I'm not interested in seeing it in an open meeting.
Okay.
And Bill, I'm just going to add something. The District Security Committee did look at all of the plans, had input during Rusty and Angela Cahill's recommendations. They looked at all the different plans, gave input. So that is already a part.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that for the record. Thank you.
And actually, we will be submitting these plans to the Building Department. Because one of the ways that we can expedite this process at the state is by having a building permit. And so we've met with the building official, the fire marshal. They're willing to review these drawings. We've actually reviewed it with them already, but they will take a look at these drawings. And I think some, one or two of them are going on vacation, so they want to get it done before that, which is great, because that works for our schedule.
Perfect.
So we'll walk in there with a building permit, which actually helps our cause.
Liz, did you have?
No, that's, my question had to, Bill asked my question.
Okay, great. Okay, any other further questions for Rusty or Vince on this? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the plans for the Security Vestibles, Union School, West District School, West Woods, Upper Elementary School, and Irving-Robins Middle School as presented?
Motion?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Rusty. Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda, 7D, Approval of the Name Change of the Cafeteria Ad-Hoc Committee to the Cafeteria Advisory Committee. Can I have a motion to approve the name of the Cafeteria Ad-Hoc Committee to the Cafeteria Advisory Committee?
Motion?
Second.
Liz, any comments?
As I discussed earlier, we're changing the name. Because it's no longer ad hoc. It's been going on for years, and we need to include other people. So this is something we just need to do, the state's requiring it.
Okay, well, thank you. So all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Okay, approved? Okay, next item, 7E, Approval of the Statement of Need for Farmington High School Project.
So there's an overview or a timeline that dates back several years of when we started the process of looking at the high school facility and doing an assessment of the facility. The statement of need is just a result of that assessment that we did back in 2014, 2015. So this gives a nice overview and links to each of the various reports and studies that we had done when it comes to the high school. And then also, just recently, talking about the two ad hoc committees and how they presented the recommendations of the two ad hoc committees at a January 22, 2019 Joint Town Council and Board of Education meeting that took place last week. This is the statement of need that was approved in the past. I have some suggested potential, like, updates that I'd want you to look at, just because I don't know if I gave you enough. So I took a look at the statement of need, and one of the things, even though on number three, it goes over ADA requirements, and it says including but not limited to, I think leaving off the gymnasium, because it's such a large space, probably wasn't wise of us to leave that off. And probably, even though the statement says including but not limited to, I think it's just such a large space and so much square footage in the high school. So I would suggest adding that. And then on number six, it says kind of a moment in time amount that we pay for electricity. And I just thought maybe we should just take, you know, the cost per year off and say, whereas Farmington High School's system, energy performance is lacking and in need of a green design. And then it says newer renovated MEP systems could save an average of 35% to 45% of annual cost. And just leave it that way without putting in the actual costs from back then or even today, and that would change over time. And then the very last change would be in the recommended motion. I think it said something, it had renovation in there, and I think it should say that a building project. And then here are the variations of that. There's renovate with additions, renovate as new, or new construction. There's a variety of things that could be selected by a building committee. And I think that it really should be more open-ended than just saying that. Those are my suggestions, but, you know, this is an opportunity to hear from the board and see if there's any other suggestions.
Well, thank you, Kathy. I mean, I agree with those amendments. And I think just the takeaway from the meeting the other night is that in order to move forward with this project as voiced by some of the constituents that spoke in a public comment, that this is obviously a vital first step and takeaway, that we have to do this to push forward on the project. So, you know, I think everybody there realizes that. As I said, I agree with your changes. So I'll just open it up for comment. But I think this is very, you know, important to do this as soon as possible and, you know, get the process moving again. So I'll open it up to comment.
Just on number six, do you think it's really necessary to even put a percentage number in there? I mean, if we're looking at numbers as being snapshots, I mean, why not just leave it as, you know, newer renovated MEP systems could save annual costs, or something to that effect, so we don't have to revisit it again in the future? Just a thought.
I appreciate your pessimism there, fella.
Yeah.
Go to 50%.
How did you know?
20%, you know, what do we violate?
It's legitimate data. I don't, I personally don't have a problem with it.
Well, it's just my question. It's just, you know, I mean, we took out the 393 and the, you know, increased the average 35 to 45, you know. But just a thought there. The other item is the recommended motion in the back, where it says building project, renovate with additions, renovate as new, or new construction. Is, should, you know, I mean, we're taking out renovations. Should we leave language in that says renovate, renovate with additions, renovate as new, or renovate as new construction?
You could do that, yeah.
Because there's a possibility if they renovate, there may not be an addition or anything to that effect. So it could just be a straight-up renovation. I have only two comments.
I like that because, and the reason why I say that is because I think the survey talked about, you know, the do-nothing option, right? And I think that responds to that feedback from the survey process in a pretty innocuous way.
Well, I think everybody agrees something has to be done. It's just a question, is it, which one is it going to be?
Right.
So I would, I would want to put in language that says renovate, renovate with additions, just add that renovate.
So on number six, I mean, this is just semantics, really, but I, where it says the energy performance is lacking, I'm not sure that really captures what we're trying to get. So like, what, like, what I think it's, a better word would maybe say it's outdated, inefficient, and in need of a green design? Like, lacking sounds like it's lagging behind. Like, it's kind of okay, but...
I like inefficient.
Efficient. I also like outdated.
Like, it's outdated, inefficient, and in need of a green design. It's not, you know what I mean? Lacking sounds like it's almost there, but it's kind of a little bit behind.
It doesn't convey the seriousness of the question.
Right.
So it's energy performance, I'm going to make the changes right here, is inefficient?
Outdated and inefficient.
Well, outdated, inefficient, and in need of a green design.
Okay.
I think that kind of conveys the seriousness of the situation.
Can I just, oh, go ahead. No, no, no. I was just going to say, just to clarify a little, it says, whereas the Farmington High School's system energy performance, should we say mechanical system or?
MEP?
MEP system or something?
Right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Oh, that's okay. That's good.
Because it's...
What do you think in leaving by saying outdated, inefficient completely, that that removes, like, that by stating that, we're saying we have to remove the entire heating system?
We do.
Is there any evidence to suggest that we can retain anything that currently exists in the MEP?
Right, because this is saying we basically have to just gut the whole thing, throw the whole system out, by saying that it's outdated and inefficient?
Exactly.
That there's nothing to salvage.
That's right. That's what we're saying.
I think that's right. That's exactly what we're saying.
That's what we're saying.
Okay, that's what you're saying. But I just want to know, is that what's actually taking place?
If we vote on that, that's what we're saying.
So is the administration saying that the heating system is completely ineffective at this point, needs to be gutted and thrown away, and there's nothing to salvage?
That's for you. I know. No, I, I like to say.
We say there's lacking. If you say there's lacking, there's room for salvage.
Yeah.
If you're saying it's outdated and efficient, then you have to take the entire thing out and toss it.
Right. I'm trying to, I mean, what I would go back to is the Tecton, you know, needs assessment for the facility. And that, number six, was getting to a more comprehensive, you know, concern over just the, not only the efficiency of the system, but the comfort throughout the building. That throughout the building, you can go from very, you know, warm classrooms to cold classrooms that, you know, and so, and also, the MEP system is also very loud in areas of the school when we're trying to instruct and have students engage in learning. So my, my understanding, because we were given the total cost of, per year, I was, it was more comprehensive in looking at the whole system, MEP system.
I think too, the door is open in the parentheses where it says new or renovated MEP system. So it leaves that opportunity if there is that one thing that could be salvaged, that that is left there. So it gives that opportunity if we had to take it.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, if there's things that can be salvaged as we go forward, that obviously those are going to be costs to consider when we're going through and the builders go in and people look at things, that we don't want them just throwing everything away if there's something to be kept. You know, we've done updates over time, so we don't want to just, you know, get rid of everything by saying it's outdated and inefficient. If there's things that are lacking and we can salvage things, we should. If there are things that are outdated and inefficient, then those pieces should go as well. But there should be, you know, copy of its overview of the entire system to save costs.
I'm comfortable with performance as lacking because I think that was their way of describing it when they went through the evaluation. So I think that's meaningful. And with the parentheses, I think it's clear what the options are when performance is lacking.
But we're five years later now, almost five years later.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, we could have Tecton review it again.
That's why we're looking at it again.
Yeah, but I think it's clear. I mean...
I think I'm more calling saying it's outdated and efficient, but leaving renovated in the print.
Right, I agree. Yeah, I agree.
To me, that leaves that door open, but it more truly describes the situation.
And that we're saying there's savings that lends itself, that it's inefficient, so...
Right. My idea, my thing is that you don't generally, for that sort of, for MEP things, you don't generally sell, it's not the kind of thing that you save a lot of those things and reuse them. It's not the kind of, I mean, and if you can, you do, but it's not the kind of thing. You go in and salvage a lot of those pieces.
If we were talking about, like, the air conditioning units that they move into classrooms or something, would those be repurposed in another school? That's where I look at, you know, renovate. Can we find something else for those? Yes, we don't want to throw those out. But if we're talking about a boiler system or something like that...
You're not going to take a boiler and move it.
You're not going to take that and use it for a portion of the school and then put something new and efficient and...
As long as there's an understanding of, you know, where we're all coming from, you know, language is fine.
Right. Yeah, as long as we're not changing the meaning of the original report that this is based off of, that's my point. If, if this is the language that came from the report, then are we changing Tecton's opinion of it at this point by changing it?
But aren't we also looking at it right now because it's four or five years later?
We don't know what Tecton's updated opinion would be. This is based on their report.
This is our statement of need.
Right. Our statement is based on what they said. We got to pull the report.
Generated from the comments and the report.
We're the Board of Education. It's our statement of need. We're, we're sending a statement of need.
I'm not a mechanic, though. I don't know what inefficiency means.
But our statement of need is based on the report that was done. And we aren't those Tecton people who went through the school.
But I don't think anything that's presented to us since then, including at the Building Committee, and including with their recommendation to replace all of that equipment, was anything different than outdated and inefficient.
Right.
Right. So that's why I want to make sure that the spirit of the language is the same as what the report read at that time, because that's the information we currently have is what they did at that point.
Let's be clear. We're playing semantics here. There's nothing we're doing here that, there's nothing that we're doing here that is inconsistent with what Tecton had suggested. Let's be very clear about that.
Exactly.
Actually, lacking, I don't even, I actually am not even comfortable with the word lacking. I don't know what it means.
That's why I think Christine's got a good... Yeah, Christine, I think Christine's language is, and I think Kathy, you typed that up, right? You made the changes?
My language.
Can you read it to us?
Yes, whereas Farmington...
Kathy's here.
Yeah, yeah.
Whereas Farmington High School's MEP systems, wait, system, energy performance, I'll have to look at that, is outdated and inefficient and in need of a green design, new or renovated MEP systems could save an average of 35 to 45% of annual cost depending upon solution.
Sounds good to me.
And I think, you know, this is a charge as a statement of needs is different than what a building committee would be doing with, okay, this is what you're doing, and if you find something that can be repurposed or renovated, do it. But this is identifying the need.
There's nothing in here precluding a building committee from being, defining an efficiency.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, this is, this is a macro level charge that we identify this need.
We're conveying to the town council, this is a significant concern of ours.
Yeah. And then at the building committee level, it can be more granular.
Of course. And then it's not like we, that decision's going to be made in a vacuum either.
Exactly, yeah.
I have one more suggestion.
Okay, Liz?
For the recommended motion, I would suggest before building project to put the word comprehensive. Because I think we are at that point now in 2019, that even if we are going to renovate, renovate with additions, renovate as new, or new construction, anything that we do in 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, needs to be comprehensive at our FHS facility. I think that we are at that point. We know that from everything that we've learned through the last three years.
I'm just struggling with what, I get what you're saying. I'm just struggling with comprehensive. Like, I think that's...
It's so interpretable.
It's so...
So many different meanings.
Here's what I think you're getting at. Please clarify for me, clarify, question if you will. Is it your concern that any project that's done could be, or anything that's recommended out of the Building Committee, if that language is not included, would be of the, of the kind, the work would be of such a nature as to not be comprehensive in the sense that it's piecemeal and that it's being made, I don't want to use the word ad hoc, but without a consistent cohesive plan? You just, okay.
Right, like...
So then my follow-up would be then, how could the Building Committee do that with the charge that it's, without, in other words, I get what you're saying. I just, it's almost like, I don't want to, I don't want to create too much of a loaded expression in the charge. I think the charge is really good, actually. I really, that's why I don't want to tinker with it very much, frankly.
I think it has to be comprehensive, given the statement of needs, actually. I mean, I think that it would have to be comprehensive. So I think it's almost in the definition. But, so I don't, I don't really think it is in, I mean, I don't, I don't think it is open to interpretation. I think, given this pretty extensive... I think, given this pretty extensive statement of need, it would have to be comprehensive. I mean, I don't see what is subject to interpretation with that word comprehensive.
I think it's already there, is what I'm saying. There is nothing about what's in...
So I don't see how it would harm anything to put it in there just to make sure that it's comprehensive. I don't see the harm in putting it there, again, to just punctuate the seriousness of what we are asking for.
You know, I just think that the statement of needs is comprehensive in its scope and in that definition, adding that just seems, it's ill, or hard to define term, and people, where they stand on this project may react negatively to that or whatever.
Well, that's fair. I mean, that's a fair point.
It's in the title of the, if you look at the title of this report, it's, this is a review and approval of statement of need for comprehensive Farmington High School plan. So it is in the title, they're seeing it.
So why would it be harmful to put it in the motion? I mean, I don't, that's just my opinion. I mean, if you, if, I mean, it's fine if you don't agree with me. I just think it's, I mean, it is, I think by its very nature, it's comprehensive. So I don't see the harm in putting it before building project.
One thing I would ask, Chris, as you're the Chair, is to the extent possible, I would love for this motion to be unanimous. So, would it be all right if we took a five-minute break?
Sure. Okay. We'll take a short recess.
Short recess.
We're in short, yep, we're in recess.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we're back in session.
At 9:37.
9:37, okay, thank you. We are back on, okay, 7E, approval of the need for Farmington High School project. I'd like a motion to approve the statement of need for the Farmington High School project with the following amendments in paragraphs.
There's one more, like a simple grammatical question.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
It was raised to me by a friend. In the, on the last page, it says the Board therefore directs the administration. The bullet that says undersized auditorium, acoustic issues, it just doesn't read right. It says not currently being addressed in their entirety, entirety, colon, everybody else is either maximize, create, or address. Can we just add the word address, the undersized auditorium? Just so grammatically looks good?
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, so then Kathy, are you, want to make some changes?
Do you want me to go over them?
Well, we, we've made some changes.
Oh, sure, I'm ready to make them.
Okay, so, yeah, so paragraph six, we'll start with paragraph six. We'll read whereas Farmington High School building energy performance is inadequate, then, and I think that's it. Yeah, that's it for that. And the rest of it will stay the same. Okay. And then...
So it would say whereas FHS building energy performance is inadequate and in need of, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Then the bullet, as addressed by Bill, and putting address in, the bullet you brought to my attention where equipment should read electrical.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the recommended motion I'm going to put forth for a vote, it is hereby resolved that the Farmington Board of Education recommends the Farmington Town Council as required in section 53-2 in the Farmington Town Code and Connecticut General Statutes, section 10-220, that a comprehensive building project perin renovate, renovate with additions, renovate as new, or new construction, and perin of Farmington High School as noted above and further, that the Farmington Town Council consider this statement of needs as soon as possible.
Move for unanimous second.
Okay, all right.
We're actually going to make the motion right.
Yeah.
unanimous second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Good. All right, thank you, everybody. Next item.
Ellen just asked if it could be sent to everyone.
Okay, yeah, okay. Next item, 8A, consideration of the Business Administrator's report approval of the financial report dated December 2018.
I feel like with this report, we're catching up to like a more real-time type of thing for the, for the Board. It was just two weeks ago that we were talking about November 2018. This is December 2018's financials. I do not really have a lot of new things to mention. The same three trend areas discussed this evening by Dr. Singer in her budget proposals are the budget drivers inside of the some financials. The special education nurses' salaries, it's continuing to have pressure on our current budget. The consultation and evaluation services, and she did a terrific job, much better job than I have done, when the Board has asked me questions about all those different things inside of consultation and evaluation, that area. And the summer school program, and that is the ES, what she referred to today as ESY or Extended School Year, special services programs, that area, those, those three are the ones that are, have pressure on the, on the budget. The health insurance, with the, with the December numbers into the self-insurance analysis, which you see on the last page of the financials, it was a slight improvement, but still, even though it was a, you see a positive number, when you look at the trend which is used when we are doing the projections for the upcoming budget this coming Saturday, it wasn't as good as I would have liked to have seen of as an improvement. It replaces a number from December of 2017, which was better. So this one, even though it was okay, didn't, it replaces a number that was better than that. So it's not doing too much help. We still have, still have pressure on this, on the self-insurance in our claims occurring. So it certainly was a little bit better than what I was talking about last month, but still not as good as I'd like to see. But that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Vince? Thank you, Vince. Can I have a motion to approve the financial report dated December 2018?
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Okay, thank you, Vince. Item nine, report of the Board Chair, well, just say that everybody get ready for Saturday, right?
Ellen's just handing out a copy of the final community newsletter. It will still, although it doesn't look this way because it's just the final copy, it'll look similar to our previous newsletters. But lots of exciting news and a new look.
Great. And as I think, you know, we learned through the ad hoc survey, is that communication can never have enough communication.
Right.
So, thank you, Ellen, for all your efforts. It's, it's great to, you know, to see that. It really is good. Thank you. But we'll have, you know, see everybody Saturday and for the big budget day, and bring your Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts, caffeine of choice.
Question?
Yeah.
Budget books?
I actually can hand them out right now.
No way.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Vince. For some light reading.
Just in case I was suffering from insomnia tonight, right?
What time do we start?
I need more of Ed, I need more.
Nine o'clock.